But like I told Tom, I'm a lover not here.
Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday night, second, seven P. M. Welcome to Wayne Township Board of Trustees meeting. And if you haven't already signed in, please sign in. I think I saw everybody do it. So you have a real call, please.
I'll roll Mr. Packard here. Chris Coleman.
Here.
And Mr. Jacob.
Here.
Our president and accounted for.
All right, let's do the lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April eighteenth?
So moved.
I will second.
Hold it in favor, signify, say no.
Aye.
Thank you.
Would either of you have any changes to our agenda tonight?
I have none. I have none.
All right. The only thing, we're going to do a work session at on the Seagraves engine and we'll do that off camera. So that will be later in the meeting. And, okay, so do we have any citizens' comments? Please limit to three minutes. Mrs. Coleman.
Thank you. Chris Coleman, I'm here on behalf of the Land Council, actually. I'm handing out the information letter from this.
Your book?
There's a copy for the trustees and afterwards. So Stacy, the village council and Chief Coleman are cordially asking the Wayne Township to participate in a multi-jurisdictional Ohio Public Works Commission grant of the Village of Wayzwell, Wayne Township residents. This project benefits township residents by replacing water lines and regaining Franklin Road from Old Stage Road to Level Road, which includes a replacement of all fire hydrants. This contribution, the contribution amount we seek from Wayne Township is one point nine percent or twenty-five thousand dollars of the Franklin Road based to project. Any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me and terminate this convenience. Again, on behalf of the council, myself, I would like to thank you for your consideration and assisting us with this important project. Thank you. Can I talk to Chief, any particular questions?
Is there, is there a deadline on it or anything?
Is there a deadline on it? I'm sure there is.
We'll get back to you off.
That's fine. I just didn't see it on here. So yeah, I appreciate it.
Three applications that are due by June.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of, we did some emergencies.
So this will be for project year twenty-five.
How are the other, the phase one project going?
They're, we're going as fast as we can with them. We're making good progress. We're getting down to these major things. We're looking forward to getting these done.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Is it anybody taking a drive back behind the pharmacy on the?
Well, Kristen.
Well, Kristen, yeah. I drove from before, yeah. It seemed like it didn't matter.
Recently?
Not within the last month, if you're talking about recently. I did it after they did the repaving, the microsurfacing or whatever, yes. So it wasn't mattered. Yeah, I mean, it was a lot better.
They, they held up there into the bargain, I guess is what I'm asking?
Yeah, okay.
I think the residents were pleased that we were able to work together and get that microsurfacing done.
It's, you know what, collaboration is the name of the game and, you know.
It is. And that's important to us. It's important to Chief. So thank you.
True.
Yeah, thank you too.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. Mr. Cameron with our road department report, please.
Good evening, board. Been, yeah, it's been a busy past week, but I'm pleased to say that the recycle rally was a huge success. At least in my, in my opinion. We're continuing to work on getting things tidied up and hauled away and cleaned up from the aftermath. So I don't have anything more than that actually to report for that until. So I'll have a, I'll have a better idea next meeting after we get all that settled. Mower tractors are all ready to go. I'm gonna look in, not next week, but Monday, so that would be the fifteenth. I'm looking to get started mowing on the fifteenth. That should get us through and have everything sped up for Memorial Day. Chip seal bids, the counties rebid and they should be open. We'll open those on the ninth. And then we'll have a recommendation, I'll have a recommendation after we get those and we'll move on from there. I've actually gotten a couple quotes from a couple of the companies. I want to, before we, you know, even entertain anything like that, I want to see what, what bids come in off of the community program. We've got some legislation, resolution for the slurry seal price, the contract for end of ninth meeting. With our, the price was actually, it was, it's just a hair higher than what it was last year, which it, it's actually not as much as what I anticipated, given, you know, the inflation of everything. Originally, they had the square yardage a lot less than what it was supposed to be. And after I re, re touched base with the representative and pointed out his error in the square yardage, it actually dropped the price from what he originally quoted. So I feel very confident with the pricing that, that he provided in the contract and would recommend to the board that they pass the resolution to accept that later on this meeting. Um, I've got, we had to do some maintenance on the road grader. We had some hydraulic leaks. We got that repaired and wedging is on my list. Paramount, as soon as the weather gets a little better and temperatures warm up a little bit. I've still got some erosion control projects on the list that I don't know whether I'll get to them this week, but it may be by the end of the month, once we get through both of the mowing. And I don't have anything down. I'm a hundred percent equipment availability. That is all I have for you to see me, unless you have anything to pass along to me.
That is good.
Have you heard anything else from the Hacker Farm Wayne people? Are they satisfied?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, that seemed like a good, they seemed happy last time. So, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything else.
Yeah, thank you for the recycle rally, the guys and everything.
Yeah, Andy and I can't wait till next year, two years to work it again. We were, we loved it.
Well, we, we penciled in, man. It's a joint effort, it's a joint effort on everybody's part and, you know, we did have, we had a couple, you know, a couple of guys from the, from the village, one from the water department, one from their state department.
The Bryans.
The Bryans, yeah, Broke Bryans helped us out and, and, you know, Stacy, you know, has, has done a lot of the coordination and everything. Gus was down there making sure the line kept moving.
Yeah.
The shred was amazing, the shred line. That was just unbelievable to me.
How much money did, oh, well, I'll get you your, your report.
So, yeah, it's a big, a joint effort on everybody's part. It's a good thing for the community, you know, the tire pile. Maybe not quite as big as the last time, but last time was a three-year cycle due, we had, we were all for COVID. So getting those tires out of the environment and getting them where they can be reused, recycled, reused for other things is always a good thing. So. All in all, good deal.
Good deal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Shear, fire department report, please.
Good evening. Emailed out updated with the red code for the month. Also sent out some reports of various files from ESO. They're still working on getting those to actually function correctly. We're six months into that cycle and we finally got our state reporting completed. That means they submitted from November to April. That went through yesterday after getting several nasty letters from state fire marshal's office for not submitting. So they finally got that corrected. And so we're happy with that. Spring fish market went well. Saturday was completely dead. Probably the worst day we've ever had, but we made it up on Sunday. So. The two thousand nine squad did sell on gun deals for sixteen thousand two to place a private ambulance service in Abington, Virginia. They are coming tomorrow to pick it up and drive it back.
Awesome. That was a good price.
We'll be here about three o'clock in the afternoon, they said, because they leave their job at eight thirty in the morning. So.
Okay.
Seagrave engine, we got that later. New member, Brian Beetz, is in legislation. Couple of other things I'd like to take at this time. And in December, we started the employee of the month, which we actually do it for two at a time. And January, February was announced at the Christmas dinner and that was Jeff Patton with my grandson's make-a-wish for the end of February and March. I was out there and then I come back from that, went straight to surgery, was off work. So we did not have one for March and April. But like this time, I'd like to give this Dave Al. Recognize him as May and June's employee of the month. He has a little, a little notebook and pen. It's all customized. Thank you for your time. You've done a lot with the IT stuff, emails. Makes a lot of runs around in the township and fills a lot of squad shifts with meeting. So.
Thanks, Stacy.
A real good one for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't tell him why you needed to come to the meeting tonight. I got something, something for you. He said, well, there's no cyber stuff really.
What's broken now, right?
So.
You can leave if you want now.
And the other part is, I'd like to thank the township for providing me with employment for the last twenty years tomorrow as full-time chief.
I'm fast.
Got a couple more to go, probably a year and a half at least, maybe. But thank you for your chance to serve you guys.
Twenty years. Congratulations.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, I didn't even really say that.
It's been a long time to put it in the cut.
What's your offer in March four thirty?
I'll be, I have physical therapy morning, so. And that's all I got.
All right.
It's great.
Thanks, Chief Shear.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Stacy Mooney, Arizona Department.
All right, well, I just, I wanted to point out, I mean, there's a comment, some stuff on there. I did want to point out that I had some conversations regarding the Pentleys Possum Resort. They added a canopy to the front of the building, which will allow like a drive-through underneath the building. Because of the canopy addition, it has caused a layout change for the entire parking lot on the front. And so it didn't meet the definition of a minor change to a subdivision, to a subdivision, to a site plan. So when it, when it meets the criteria for a major modification of the site plan, it has to come back to the trustees. So you're going to see that again in two weeks. I have notified the property owners again and run the ads again and everything, but it really, the number of parking spaces might be one more or something, but it's essentially similar. You're just pushing the whole parking lot out more towards the right of way instead of linear along the building. So we'll need to have a, we'll have a public hearing on that. The BZA approved a couple of variances on April twentieth. And then just for the recycle rally, we received my entire back of my van, you know, full of food, basically.
Good.
Dropped off and then four hundred and fourteen dollars in cash deposited today that we will, they'll issue them a check.
Awesome. That's good. Good to hear. Thanks for running that. It really went well. I think everything flowed smoothly out. All right, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Gus had words. Administrator's report.
Good evening, trustees. Got our health renewal completed. So we're ways, it's on our policy. It's good to go for May first. I hope to stay with Anvil. Seagrave fire access update. We'll have a little work session at the end as I'm continuing the negotiations with them on their surcharge. Business Expo on Saturday, April twenty-second, Wayne Elementary. Thought it went real well. I've got some good exposure and created a couple interested parties for fire departments that might result in something in the future, we'll see.
Yeah, the banner looked good. The banner looked good in the back and everything.
All right, yeah, it was real sharp. Probably the biggest thing I want to bring right now is staffing. It's getting to the point in time we need to decide what we're going to do with six people that we tried to get funding for through our property tax last November. So I'd like the board to start starting the process and asking the order to certify the revenues generated off of one bill of property tax in order to determine the amount of village that we need to present to the voters in November for staffing purposes only. And I'd like to know if you, any thoughts or input about going ahead and starting that process? Because it takes about three, three different resolutions and so forth that we have to do. And we'll have until August to put something on.
I'm, I'm fine to begin the process, but not as an indication that, you know, it, it's a commitment to duty thing or, you know, as an exploratory measure, yes, to find out, you know, to make sure we don't prevent ourselves from being able to take any additional steps as, as the summer progresses, yes, but, you know, I, I, I think we have things that we need to do first as a board, things we have to try before we, we go ask for one.
I agree. Start the process and we'll see if we're good. Yeah, it doesn't hurt anything to start it.
That's great. We start it, make it from there. Yep.
And the ARBO funds that were reported was due on April thirtieth. And Darrell got those reports and expenditures in. So I'd like to thank him for taking care of that.
Go ahead. Some good help. You.
I attended Richmond's compensation state fund seminar on April twenty-fifth. Kind of a little informational thing, but it's a three-quarters of the day work session. And generally, if you have an, an act that you're required to follow a year to go ahead and take the training and so forth, so it seems like every year I end up having to go to or go to it by choice, but they, they give you a lot of good four years and updates and so forth. Actually, monthly safety council, they're going to go to a three percent rebate for attending safety council opposed to two. So that's probably the newest thing with PWC. And also underneath that, I did have also in the packet, the CEO breakfast for a safety council meeting on May nineteenth? Is it the eighteenth? I got nineteenth down here. I prefer that date. And that's one where usually I or Stacy or Scott goes and it's one where they invite the CEO, whatever the company or whatever, can come along for a free breakfast. If anybody wants to go, everyone, welcome to come. This is going to be an amazing experience. And that's all I have.
Any other questions?
None. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Derek.
All right, old business, convention of states. We have legislation tonight. Website updates, guys.
Still working on it?
Still working on it.
But you can't beat the price.
Okay, exactly. All right.
That's it?
Uh, any other?
I was hoping to hear more because we're struggling with the same thing with the village.
Oh, I, I, I'm the one doing the website. So, but, but Range USA, they, they paid me very good money to take care of their website and I really don't do any other websites.
I know that. I'm here for the village enrollment and I'm the lead on retooling our website. So I saw that it was on the agenda. So I was curious to hear what you all have to say.
And I, I would recommend highly Jesse Kinkowski with Legend Web Works.
We have two, we've now selected two bids. We're between two bids right now and Jesse's one.
Yeah, so, so he has a great company. He's done a lot of local organizations, gives back.
Yeah.
You know, websites are not cheap.
Right.
As you probably found.
Right.
But a, a, a lot of it, I, I can say at least for, for him and his group, they do quality work that lasts for a long time. And they, they've been good for the community too, so.
Yeah, I've been in communication with him since November and we keep going back and forth.
Just find somebody in the village of Corwin that does websites and get them on council, you know?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any questions or concerns about the bills?
I have none.
All right, on to legislation. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight. I'm going to read this one in its entirety. Everybody's going to enjoy this. A resolution supporting and asking for our state legislature calling for a convention of states. Whereas it is a fundamental precept of American government that the best governance is that which is closest, most accessible and most accountable to the people. And whereas it is for this reason that our constitution strictly limits and defines the powers of the federal government and explicitly reserves all remaining government functions to the states and the people. And whereas in recent decades, the jurisdiction, authority and resources of the state and local governments have been radically diminished by an ever-growing usurpation of jurisdiction and power by all three branches of the federal government, which has corresponded with an increasing confiscation of tax dollars that could otherwise remain in the state and localities. Whereas the realities of human nature and institutional momentum make it a virtual certainty that federal officials will not individually nor as institutions ever undertake reforms that would halt or reverse the exponential growth of their power. Whereas unsurprisingly, the decisions, policies, laws, regulations and actions of our federal officials and institutions in Washington, DC are unresponsive to the unique needs and situations of individual states and localities. Whereas neither state and local leaders nor individual citizens have any meaningful way to impact or influence the decision-making of the federal officials and institutions, which are now dictating many of the policies that govern them. Whereas it is the duty of state and local leaders to uphold and defend the U.S. Constitution as well as the Ohio Constitution and to use their position of public trust in the best interest of the people. Whereas the need and interest of the people of our state and local communities can only be adequately served through a restoration of the authority and resources originally reserved to the state and local levels of government. Whereas because systematic overreach by all three branches of the federal government have gone unchecked at the federal level and resulted in de facto revisions of our constitution to expand federal power and jurisdictions, the only power effective recourse, the only proper effective recourse is through the proposal and ratification of constitutional amendments that reject the reversions of constitutional language, reinstate the need, needed limitations on federal power and jurisdiction and restore the authority of the state and local governments, which are responsive to the people. Whereas Article Five of the Constitution provides for the proposal of constitutional amendments on specific topics through a meeting, convention of states, and for the subsequent ratification of such amendments by three quarters, which is thirty-eight of the states. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne Township Board of Trustees, a grassroots local government, governmental entity of Warren County, fulfilling its duty to serve the best interest of its constituents hereby calls upon the Senate and Assembly of the Ohio State Legislature, especially Senator Steve Wilson and Representative Scott Lips, the elected representative of those constituents, to advance and adopt with all possible speed the concurrent legislative resolutions and adding Ohio to the role of many other states that have adopted resolutions to trigger an Article Five Convention of States, which are limited to fiscal responsibility, term limits and rating in the scope, power and jurisdiction of the federal government. To draft, consider, debate and propose constitutional amendments, which once ratified would restore the proper measure of authority and resources to the level of government closest to the, and most responsive to the people. Okay, got through it. I did it. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I, I mean, there, there are folks on both sides of this argument that, that bring, you know, forth very good points. You know, I, I fully support everything that at a conceptual level, I think every conservative would look at these things and be like, yeah, I agree with that, I agree with that, and I agree with that. I, I, I think the debate comes with the the method, you know, and is this the best, is this the best method? Is this the way that, that, you know, the right way to proceed? You know, we've heard warnings of runaway conventions and we've heard, you know, answers for those things. I mean, I, I'm a firm believer in federalism. I, I'm a firm believer that things have gotten way, way out of control at the federal level.
A good example is today. We just saw the one percent surcharge on loans now.
Yes, true.
If you have a high credit rate, which you've taken a time to do all you can to pay your bills and everything, now they want a surcharge on it. It's ridiculous. It's out of control. I'm sorry, I get mad and frustrated because we see it down here and this is the stuff that affects all of us. This isn't the rich. This is everybody and it comes down too. So.
No, no, and, and I, I agree. I mean, you know, it, it's, it's extremely frustrating, especially when you have three-letter agencies that, you know, are unelected. They do not represent the people. And they make rules and guidelines and guidances and, you know, everything that they can do except to call them balls. But they create these things. And, and I suppose this is part of, of where I get concerned with the whole thing is that, you know, the constitution very clearly outlines what the, you know, the, the delineation of power, it outlines the, what the federal government is responsible for. Who are you calling?
Is there Bluetooth turned on or something?
So, you know, there's, there's a, you know, I, I believe I learned in civics class, the federal government's responsible for the borders, for interstate, or, yeah, interstate commerce and currency. Am I missing anything as far as that official powers that have been granted to the federal government? And it's gone back a long time, but, 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 you know, true, truly, I'm, I'm pretty sure those are the three things that have been granted to them specifically. And everything else they've done is this monster that they've unleashed. Again, I, I don't think there's any debate amongst us as far as, you know, where we wound up. But at the same time, you know, three fourths of the state legislature has also approved the Sixteenth Amendment, which gave us the income tax, which never went away. Three fourths of them also approved the Seventeenth Amendment, which gave the direct election of senators. You know, both things that certainly aren't in line with federalism and the proper separation of powers. We do have the Tenth Amendment, which is supposed to really address this for us. So I guess my thing is, you know, it, what's the point in doing these types of things if we don't hold our leaders accountable to begin with? It's never, it's never my Steve Wilson or my Scott Lips. You know, it's never my representative who's, you know, doing the wrong things. Everybody else is, right? But, but, you know, the, the right way I feel to, to approach any of these things is to hold our leaders, hold our legislators accountable from the moment that they're elected, from the moment that they are campaigning. So, you know, I, I, I suppose what I'm saying is the lunatics are running the asylum and we're saying, well, let's give them more straitjackets. They're not using the straitjackets to begin with. Yeah. That's, that's my contribution to the, to the conversation.
We're going to make a motion that we call a vote on this.
So I'll make a motion that we, uh...
You want to second my motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
Yes, you made it, yes.
Okay.
I lost where I was at.
Okay, okay.
I have a motion on this, Colvin, second Mr. Jacobs' call for a vote on this resolution 2023-28. Call roll there on, Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this is the second day of May 2023.
My point is we got to do something. We got to try something, do something.
That's right.
But I, I don't disagree with you on it, but this, but now that we have done this and before with it, I think we got to hold our leaders accountable. We still have to.
It's, it's a vote.
Yeah, I agree with you wholeheartedly too. Yeah, we got to. So, yeah, appreciate it.
Okay. Moving on then. Resolution 2023-29. Approval, approve the acceptance and hiring of Braden Deetz to the Wayne Township Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter two slash EMTV.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, wait, let's hear about him first.
Sorry. I must.
I know, I know you did.
But take him, we don't care. Let's, let's approve him. Braden's a 2021 graduate, Wayne'sville High School. He's resident of Village of Wayneville. He attended college for a short time and realized that college was not his thing, and he wanted to do a career change, and he got into fire DMS. He is certified fire two, EMTV, looking for experience. After six months or a year, he wants to start a debate class to get some experience as a basic. He likes to fish and workout gym. He has no family that's in it, no relatives is in it.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to ask how, how we obtained him. Did he come to us or didn't?
He came to us, sent an email.
Okay. All right. And have any of our recruiting events?
No. His, his father had a medical emergency, and we treated him at three hospital, and that's when we decided he wanted to do this, but he wanted to give it back to his community, so.
Hopefully nobody else gets sick and that happens too, but that's, that's a good thing to see. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-29.
I'll second that.
Oh, wow, it's 30.
It's 30?
Yes.
Yeah. Or wait.
Wait, it's 29, 29.
Oh, shoot, the thing that he sent, okay. I'm, I'm reading the, okay.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Jacobs, second by Mr. Patrick, to adopt Resolution 2023-29. Call roll there on, Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this is the second day of May 2023.
Okay. Resolution 2023-30 is a resolution accepting a bid from Strauss Construction for micro-surfacing the streets of various subdivisions in Wayne Township.
So the, the bid that we do have, they, they actually work through the state bid program, so, which absolves us from having to put it out to bid. You know, so because at, at the state bid price, it is through CEO dot...
10 to 101G or something?
That's a 101G, yes, that's the line item. So.
And this is the correct square yards that's on this resolution?
That is correct, yes. So. Mr. Edwards and myself recommend that we do accept this bid.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-30.
I'll second.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Jacobs, second by Mr. Patrick, to adopt Resolution 2023-30. Call roll there on, Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this is the second day of May 2023.
So I'll, I'll leave a PR for, for, uh, when we came in.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Resolution 2023-31 is part of our Wayne Township 2023 Road Department, Micro-Surfacing Road Project, and this is authorizing expenditures from the ARPA funds, using the standard allowance. So.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-31.
I'll second. We have a motion for Mr. Patrick, second by Mr. Jacobs, to adopt Resolution 2023-31. Call roll there on, Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this is the second day of May 2023.
This, this resolution will just expend $25,000.
$25,000, right, yeah. Okay. See if Darrell's done any, do you have any correspondence, Gus? I'm starting to do this time.
We have a, some volunteer energy lawsuit. Just notifying us that we are, had three facilities, I think Morgan's Lane, 165 Miami Street, and 650 Sparkville Road. Part of, we run the volunteer energy program for gas at that time, and so we just identified other information that I received. Payman Technology, which is our recollect representative, he sent us correspondence that he came stopped in the other day and had him go out and measure cook down here. That's what we paid last year, we took what we called a, called here a recollect. He's sent a price in at $1.15 per square yard, which will amount to about $20,187.10. But that's, the final measurements will be determined by the final qualities, quantities, and price. So basically, it's going to be based on a $1.15. I calculated, I think, an 18-foot wide road, and it was more like $17,000 or $18,000. So it's probably $20,000 or less. And so I guess when I'm asking the pitch meeting, we come back like that resolution we just had, for, we were for this, and taking $25,000 out of our rescue plan funds. And with that said, under, I guess, new business or whatever, I guess, size correspondence, I think, give you an update for our funds. So you'll find a 2021 trunks in the first column, and 22 trunks in the second column. We pretty much have the first column committed to the spent, what's in red, so it's actually been paid year-to-date, what's in black, then what's been committed by resolutions. And then I got your resolution numbers out to the end there on the right, right-hand column. And then those that don't have resolutions are ones that we are anticipating on performing. I guess at least I am, but have got final approval from the board, and that would be potentially a 2024 employee retention program, and 23 chip seal program, you know, we'll figure it out there. Oh, C-grade fire engine is blank on that. And, let's see, then. You got a copy, I think, via email, of correspondence from the prosecutor's office?
Yes.
Yes.
In relation, in regards to our C-grade fire appraisals request for a surcharge, so if you talk about that in the court system.
Okay. Any correspondence, Darrell?
No, I have none. Bye.
Elected officials comments.
I'd like to say thank you to Wayne'sville Village Council members that have come out tonight, and also the Corwin Council members that's come out tonight. Thank you for attending, delivering your message in person. It's well-received and appreciated. I'd also like to thank Mr. Colvin for his passionate remarks about the Convention of States project, and although I didn't vote that way, I think he knows that we respect each other a lot, so. Paul, thank you very much for your 20 years of service.
Blake.
Very much appreciated. I can't imagine where the township would be without you, so.
Blake.
Thank you for everything.
I know you almost teared up when you resigned.
Yeah.
You're, you're an exhausted.
And that's not to include the other 21 years, close to 22 years of volunteer service.
I thought you were putting in your resignation.
And, 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 and first my heart's saying, we are not ready for this.
It's, it's, it's going to happen sooner than later, I will tell you that.
I know.
Uh, I am sort of projecting October of 2024, maybe? I mean, I, I'm, you know, what we're thinking, I mean, well, I will give you plenty of those.
Okay, so good.
Take, take some extended vacations, make sure Missy can handle you.
Well, that's right.
That's, that's the biggest discussion we have right now. With my injury this year, first spending a lot of time, next spending time at home, I don't know that we can do it.
You can still be a volunteer.
You should have put that, sure.
I don't know, I, I've talked to a whole lot of people, and they said it's best if prior chiefs disappear.
I, I, I can see that.
Yeah, because there always you'd be like, hey, don't do it right.
Conflict of leadership, and, yeah.
Come around when there's fish fries or...
That's not how chief used to do it.
You know, that's, you know, that's what I've been told, I've been, you know, and what's happened so far.
Pretty much Jack Frost did that, you know, when he left.
Yeah.
He left.
David, congratulations on 40 months, too.
That's awesome. I think, I don't know, we work with a lot of good people, that's for sure. Okay, I'm going to go turn the camera off so we can go to our C grades.
Don't see us out. I have nothing to do with this, I'm going to excuse myself.
We'll let you know, we have, we have a little time.
Just let me tell you what time it is. I'm going to do, make some motions to do this.
There it is.
Thank you.
Right in front of the camera here. Should shut them off, I think. It's supposed to.